All right, it's 5:30 on the dot. Welcome to the February 12th meeting of the Planning, Eureka Planning Commission. Our first order of business tonight because our chair is absent and our vice chair has rotated out is to choose a chair for this meeting. Commissioner Freitas, you were gonna do that?
I was going to do that. I was going to nominate you as chair for the purposes of holding this meeting.
We have a motion to second?
Well, since you're sitting in the chair, I'm gonna second that motion. So I second Delos.
I just want to point out to the assembled room that I was power hungry enough to sit in the one remaining seat. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Let us start with a roll call vote.
Commissioner Freitas?
Here.
Soon to be Commissioner Benson?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Lazar?
Here.
And Commissioner Meyer is not with us tonight.
All right. Commissioner Lazar, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move to item C, oath of office. We have Commissioner Lazar continuing to take his oath of office and new Commissioner Benson will take his first time at an oath of office. And Director Kenyon, I'm hoping you will lead us through what we need to do there.
Yes, I've requested that they read their own oath of office, so I would suggest Commissioner Benson, would you like to go first?
Sure. All right. I, Michael Benson, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I'll bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Charter of the City of Eureka. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter in the capacity of Commissioner for Planning Commission of the City of Eureka.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lazar?
Thanks. I, Steve Lazar, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I'll bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Charter of the City of Eureka. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter in the capacity of Commissioner for Planning Commission of the City of Eureka.
All right, thank you for that. We need to move to item D and elect officers. I understand that Chair Meyer is willing to continue. I would nominate her to continue but would also be open to other nominees from fellow commissioners.
I'm supportive of continuing to have her service chair as well.
I feel the same.
Same.
All right. I don't mind throwing my hat in to be vice chair, but again, would be happy to have other nominees.
That is one job I do not want, so.
All you.
Yep, also very supportive of that.
Yeah, and I'll just say, since you're sitting in the chair, I think would be appropriate.
All right. Is there any kind of, can we vote for both at once? All right.
I will make a motion to elect current chairperson Meyer to continuous chair and Michael Kraft to serve as vice chair for another term.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item E, minutes. It occurs to me, to my shame as I'm sitting here, that I'm the person who always reads the minutes and I did not read the minutes. I will ask for a motion on approving the minutes from December 11th.
I reviewed the minutes and they appear to be accurate. I would move that we approve them.
I'll second.
All right, again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item F, this is oral communications. This is for anybody in the public or on Zoom who wishes to address the commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. For the items that are agendized, we'll get to those in a bit. Is there anybody who would like to take advantage of that? And do we have a Zoom room?
Yeah, I'm here on Zoom and we don't have anyone with their hand raised.
All right. Then we'll close that and move to, looks like no public hearings continued, so item H, new public hearings, starting with H1, the Brown Vacation Rental, will take the staff report.
All right, our senior planner, Lisa Savage, will be giving this staff report.
We're seeing it on our devices up here, but not on the public or what's going out on the web. There we go.
There we go. Good evening, commissioners. This evening, we have an application for a vacation rental minor use permit with no proprietor on site located at 1105 McDonald Street. What? Oh, shoot, sorry. Yeah, there, one, there we go. Here's a bird's eye view of the location, which is on the southwest side of Eureka, two blocks from West Harris and within a short walk to Broadway. Zooming in further, the property is located on McDonald Street between High Street and Glen Street, surrounded by other single-family residential properties. The applicant seeks to utilize an existing 1,400 square foot, four-bedroom, one-bathroom single-family residence on a 6,600 square foot property as a vacation rental with no proprietor on site. The subject property is located in the residential low or R1 district where vacation rentals with no proprietor on site require a minor use permit. A notice of pending action, or NOPA, was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the property on November 13th, 2024, which described how to request a public hearing. Subsequently, a hearing was requested. The concerns expressed in the appeal generally pertain to the lack of available housing for Eureka residents, parking, and safety. The concerns, excuse me, the concerns are addressed within the staff report. Because a public hearing was requested, the planning commission is required to act on the minor use permit. To approve the use permit for the vacation rental, no proprietor on site, the commission must find the proposed use is consistent with the general plan and zoning code, the project site is suitable for the use, the use is compatible with existing and planned uses in the vicinity, the use will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, and the use is properly located within the city and adequately served by public services and infrastructure. Based on the analysis in the staff report, the proposed vacation rental, no proprietor on site, is consistent with all the above findings. Therefore, staff recommends that we hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution to find the project is exempt from CEQA and conditionally approve. I have a suggested motion when you're ready, but we'll stop screen sharing for the discussion. Staff and the applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, commissioners, any, any questions for staff?
I had a question about the number of vacation rentals in the vicinity. Is there any, do you have any numbers on that?
I personally haven't done any other vacation rentals in that specific area, but I don't know the exact, you know, if there is a, if there are any others.
Because when I pulled up the mapping that I had prepared with Commissioner Kraft at the subcommittee, I saw there was two in neighboring streets that we had in our, maybe they're in the compliance drive, I'm not sure, but I just wanted to know if there'd been any information on that. Okay. Yeah, okay, that's, I don't have any other questions right now.
All right, we will now open the public hearing. This is the time when anyone who wants to address the commission on this topic can do so. Everyone who comes up will have three minutes and we generally allow the applicant to make the first, make the first pitch, so anyone, including the applicant who would like to address the commission. Come on up, state your name.
My name's Mike Brown.
That is the actual power that I have.
At least it's going up. Anyway, I'm the owner of that property and I want to make it into, like we said, a vacation rental and I am going to be having to make a lot of upgrades to the property, which is what, waiting to get the go-ahead that this is okay to do. And when I do, then of course I gotta go through the permit process to make everything code compliant because a building like this is gonna get inspected. So the plan is to do the standard stuff, paint the house, put a fence around it, do some landscaping, you know, and clean it up and just mostly painting, a fence, and then once I get a permit, then we do the remodeling inside, rewiring, sheet rock, new floors, et cetera, just, you know, you're basic flipping the house. I mean, it's, the house is in good shape, but if you're gonna do a rental like that, you know, you're gonna have to do a lot of upgrades. And so that's, that's the plan for it.
All right, well, we have the applicant. Any questions you want to ask specifically? All right, thank you, sir. Others who'd like to address the commission on this item?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike Newman and I have grandkids right next door. My son-in-law, or stepson and daughter-in-law live on the property right next door, which is on Glen Street, so their kitchen and yard is right there next to the, the residence in question here. Part of the problem I have with this is since I've been married to my wife and having the grandkids here ages four and two, I'm concerned about their safety with people coming in on a vacation rental and there's up to 10 people that can stay there. So there is no wherewithal about if they're all adults or a family or what. There could be, you know, sexual predators that could rent that for a weekend or a week or two weeks or whatever, but, you know, vacation rental is short-term and generally turned over. I'm not sure about what the repercussion, or the, the limits on how many times per year can be rented, if there are any put on this permit. But the house in question has not been kept up at all and it's had various people in it since I have been courting my wife and then married to her for the past three years and going regularly over to Glen Street. The owner has not kept things up and I'm leery about the protection and the follow-through on what would happen once this became permitted as a vacation rental. The main part I have is about the safety of my grandkids and, and my kids as well. There is a lot of traffic on Glen Street anyway and being right next door there with additional people there, I see on the permit it has requests or the restriction for 10:00 PM until 8:00 AM for noise. And I don't know about what the exact noise decibel level is and that the owner would be contacted. He lives in Arcata. However quickly that can happen and with police response being what it is, with the police department very low, those are my concerns. So thank you for listening to me. I think I have some more people coming up too.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Others?
Hello, my name is Denato Pope. I am their neighbor. I would just like to say that I think in the piece of paper that your neighbors are supposed to be notified about the hearing or whatever going on with that this is gonna be turned into an Airbnb so you can have a, like, listening in. We, I've talked to them. I'm very, we have a very nice relationship with them and we've talked about having a possible Airbnb there like eight-plus months ago, but I did not know that it was gonna be on the ballot today until probably about 45 minutes ago. So that was a little concerning because I've had neighbors, when we talked about it being an Airbnb, that a lot of the neighbors in my neighborhood have also agreed that a lot would need to go into if it did become an Airbnb. As the person that lives right next door to them, obviously have concerns for my children and stuff. I, I work in the security industry and so I'm very familiar with my neighborhood anyways, as is. And I don't think that having an Airbnb would be better, but, you know, like I said, at the same time, if they took a lot of, like, as he said, if they really did fix up their house, made it nicer and everything, that's what I wanna see. Because over the course of the last time that they said that it could possibly be an Airbnb and me talking to their daughter, because I said that I'd just buy their house because of, hey, the house is in pretty bad shape, let me just buy it from you guys, because then I would just try to take down my fence and just build a bigger and try to expand out because of my growing family. They said, no, Airbnb, that's what we wanna do, kinda thing. And like I said, it's been months. I don't know what's going on inside the house. There's a lot of foot traffic that comes throughout all kinds of hours, multiple different cars and whatnot, but on the outside, for the most part, there's not a lot of change. And so that's where I'm coming out from my point of view as the neighbor that will have to be putting up with this, is that Eureka's already not turning into a very good place from when I was a kid and I get that we just cleaned up Highland Park, but there's still foot traffic down there that is not good. And so as the neighbor that would have to be dealing with this and also not knowing about it, like I said, I think in the piece of paper it says that we're supposed to know about it, I feel like it was way too soon in my mind, but thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room that wants to address the commission on this issue? All right, seeing none, anybody on Zoom?
Nobody has their hands up.
All right, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Commissioner Kraft? I found, I remembered I have a map of the permitted vacation rentals that I opened and the last time I updated it was January 2024 and there's none in the, there's none permitted in the neighborhood. The closest one is on, it's at 3583 Albee Street, which is like across the Jacobs campus to the east of this site.
The mapping that I did didn't show permitted rentals, it showed ones that were, we were aware of potentially.
Right, ones that are advertising on.
One on Cottage and one on, hard to see the cross street, but yeah.
There's no.
Oregon, one on Cottage, one on Oregon.
There's no permitted one on Cottage and there's no permitted one on Oregon.
And do we know if those are compliance drive targets or anything like that?
Yes, they both are. And I think they're both, haven't started paying their TOT fees yet, so we haven't invited them to be, I was just working on this today, we haven't invited them to license because they haven't dealt with their, their taxes yet.
Thank you, disembodied voice.
I was wondering before we ask other questions if Raylene or others could verify that the radius mailer did go out timely and to who it was supposed to go out to, since that was raised in public comment.
If I can get the gentleman's address, I can do that really quickly.
One thing is that the mailer goes out to property owners within 300 feet, so it gets mailed to the address of the property owner.
3312 Glen Street, Eureka, California, 95503.
Okay, give me just a sec.
Thanks, Raylene.
I guess maybe during this break we could ask, since we have permitted vacation rentals already and they've been in operation now for years in some cases, could you speak a little bit to kind of how often we end up in situations where we receive complaints from neighboring property owners about a permitted one that we have to respond to? Is there any instances that come to mind or?
I don't know of any instances. It's never been brought up by EPD or code enforcement, but I haven't directly asked that question.
Would it naturally come to the attention of the department or might it stop at police or code enforcement?
I mean, they elevate stuff at management team meeting that they're dealing with. They're definitely dealing with some serious issues in Eureka that do get elevated.
So it sounds like, as far as you know, like, we don't routinely hear complaints about vacation rentals that are permitted at least, or unpermitted frankly, it sounds like.
To my knowledge.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the postcard for 3312 Glen Street went out to a Charles Blunk and it was, I can see the printed postcard and it's on my list of ones that would go out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Raylene, good question. Commissioner Freitas?
You know, to Commissioner Lazar's point, we have approved several permits here at the Planning Commission with similar concerns raised. I definitely appreciate concerns about how it may impact families. My parents live right up the street, I have a little kid, I was raised in that neighborhood. If there was a vacation rental proposed right next door to my parents' house, it would make me proud if my dad came out as a grandparent and expressed concerns. That being said, it doesn't seem like this property is showcasing anything unique that would make it difficult for us to make the decision tonight. So I'm wondering if other commissioners disagree, if they have anything that they'd like to highlight.
I don't have anything specific to this property. I think we, as a body, 2023, 2024, were pretty active on this issue, reported to the city council, staff worked on some stuff. I think we have, I think we basically have the policy that we're working to. We've collectively decided, the city has decided that, you know, while we have some concerns, we don't have too much density in almost any neighborhoods, we don't have a high percentage overall that is, you know, every house that is not there for housing is gonna be felt but isn't a particularly high percentage. You know, my position on this has been, we're not Trinidad, we're not likely to be Trinidad, but we certainly want to keep an eye on it and not lose control of, of the city in the way, in ways akin to places that are that popular with vacation rentals. So, long way of saying, I, I agree with you and I, it sounds, is there other discussion or are we ready for a vote?
Yeah, I'll just agree as well. I think that this, what I heard that was encouraging to me is this is certainly evident, I mean, it's pretty clear that this house could use some investment and improvements and we have testimony from the applicant that they're prepared to do so but are awaiting this entitlement before they pull the trigger. So I find that persuasive as far as being a positive aspect of this proposal. Certainly, that's, there will be a requirement for the, the structure to be reviewed for code compliance before it can be opened up to this occupancy. That's, to me, a benefit to the overall community and these aren't permanent decisions by an owner, they can be walked back from a successor, you know, and the investments can become a better part of our housing stock, so it's not irreversible, the, the things that are done to a home in service of making it a vacation rental. So, you know, I don't see idiosyncrasies with this site, like Commissioner Freitas said, that, that would make me concerned. It's got an abundance of street parking, it's a corner lot, so, yeah, I haven't heard anything that would give me pause for supporting it.
I also feel the same. Some of the issues that were brought up were foot traffic and randomness of people and eyesore of the property and I feel like this would certainly help the eyesore, it would add value to the neighboring houses and it would also bring maybe a better demographic of people coming to pay, to stay. And I feel like the, the issue that was addressed of, of, you know, maybe sexual predators or whatever, I mean, wasn't that a concern currently with, if there's a bunch of foot traffic? So I, I agree with the other commissioners as far as approving it and. Um increasing value to the area.
All right, I will take a a motion please. Want to bring that up?
I'll make the motion since I started the discussion once it's brought up. I move the planning commission adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from C Q A. And conditionally approving the vacation rental minor use permit at one, one, zero, five McDonald Street.
I'll second the motion.
All right, got a motion in a second, uh let's do a roll call vote on this one.
Commissioner Freitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lazar.
Aye.
And Commissioner Kraft.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right, item H two, North Coast Substance Abuse Council for non-medical housing facility. Ready for the staff report?
For this one, we have Assistant Planner Alex Gonzalez, looks like Derek's on it.
There you go, I'm Assistant Planner Gavolos and I'm here to present on the. Uh conditional use permit for the proposed North Coast Substance Abuse Council Non-Medical Care Housing Facility at three oh nine Harris Street. Here's a bird's eye view of the project, the project site, which is is located in the south central portion of the city. Zooming in, the project site, which is outlined in red, is about point three acres in sight. And located on the northeast corner of the in Harris Streets. It's located within the Henderson zoning district and on land with the land use designation of neighborhood commercial. The site currently has three existing structures and the applicant proposes to use. Three oh nine Harris, a two-story, two thousand six hundred and thirty-one square foot building, fronting Harris as a residence. There were not, three one nine Harris, a five hundred and eighty-eight square foot cottage-like building. Located at the rear of the site as an office for staff and individual counseling sessions. And three two five Harris, a six hundred and sixteen square foot modernist style commercial building, fronting Harris as an office for group therapy services. The site also has nine off-street parking spaces, existing landscaping, uh fronting Harris Street. And a one-way drive aisle, also access from Harry Street as seen in the yellow arrows. Here's a street view of the site from Harris Street. And according to the applicant, the proposed use will function as a state licensed residential facility. Providing non-medical, social and personal care with a focus on offering uh housing and behavioral health to support up to twelve people. Uh no detox services will be provided on site. Background checks and drug tests are required before being admitted into the program. There would be a twenty-four seven live-in manager on site. Preapproval is required before going off-site. Quiet hours are going to be enforced. Uh limit, there is limited ve- visitation to four-hour blocks on Saturday and Sunday. And services provided on site will not be open to the public. There are some regulations and required permits. There are federal and state housing laws that protect people with disabilities from housing discrimination. And recovering alcoholics and drug addicts are considered disabled for the purposes of anti-discrimination laws. More specifically, Health and Safety Code, section one, one, eight, three, four, point, two, three. States that a permit or clearance is not required for an alcohol or other drug recovery or treatment facility. That serves six or fewer persons. Um that is not required of a single-family residence in the same zone. And therefore, under this provision, the city can't require any permits, including a business license for small, non-medical care housing facilities. And small facilities in this case um means facilities that serve six or less people. However, because the proposed use may serve up to twelve people at a time. The city can require a conditional use permit because it's considered a large facility. Furthermore, the zoning code describes large facilities as serving seven or more people. And in the H C districts, large facilities require a conditional use permit. So there are five uh required findings for approval, requiring that the proposed use is consistent with the general plan. Zoning code and any applicable specific plan or area plan adopted by the city council. The site is suitable for the size, design and operating characteristics of the proposed use. The proposed use will be compatible with existing and planned land uses in the vicinity of the property. The proposed use will not be detrimental to public health, safety and welfare. And the proposed use is properly located within the city and adequately served by existing or planned services and infrastructure. Some notable conditions placed on the project include the applicant must obtain all required building and fire permits and clearances. And obtain the appropriate certificates of occupancy from the building department. This helps address the concerns about whether uh three oh nine Harris is suitable to be or is habitable as a residence. The applicant requests to frost windows of the small commercial building, fronting Harris. Uh to maintain a pedestrian-friendly environment, frosting is limited to the lower windows and must maintain the upper windows clear. Uh the applicant is also encouraged to include a mural or some kind of design on those windows to again encourage a pedestrian-friendly environment. The applicant is also required to upgrade non-conforming site features, including outdoor lighting. Landscaping, uh parking lot striping and signage as part of the use permit process. The city did receive numerous comment letters with safety concerns about both the building and the proposed use, which have been forwarded to you. Um if the use permit were to be approved and later found to be problematic for the community. The city does have a permit revocation process as described under Eureka Municipal Code. One, 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 five, five, four, two, eight, oh, eight, oh, that would allow the planning commission to revoke the permit after another notice public meeting. The section allows for a permit to be revoked for several reasons, including. The applicant or property owner has altered the circumstances under which the permit was granted. To a degree that one or more of the findings required to grant the original permit can no longer be made. The permit issuance was based on misrepresentation by the applicant, either through the omission or embellishment of a material statement. In the application or in the public hearing testimony. One or more conditions or mitigations have been violated or have not been complied with or fulfilled. The applicant or property owner has failed or refused to allow um inspections for compliance. Improvements authorized by the permit are in violation of the zoning code or any law, ordinance, regulation or statute. And or the use or structure is being operated or maintained in a manner which constitutes a nuisance. Staff believe all the required findings to approve the C E P are included in the staff report. And for these reasons, the recommendation is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from C Q A. And conditionally approving the application. I have a suggested motion when you're ready, um but I'll stop screaming, screen sharing until then. Uh myself and the applicant. Um and the realtor are here uh and available for any questions.
Thank you for that. Uh let's open it up for questions you have. Fellow commissioners.
I'm curious to hear from the applicants maybe um or the realtor. Why this site was considered um, you know, what criteria went into choosing the site? Was it the size, was it the location? Um that might be interesting for the commission to hear.
Also, the property owner is, has her hand up on Zoom?
Hi, my name is Wes Harrison, I'm the executive director of North Coast Substance Abuse Council, also known as Crossroads. Uh the site in specific was chosen due to its location in Henderson Center. Uh whether folks know it or not, uh this district is actually a behavioral health district. It is located two blocks from three other drug treatment programs. That is Humboldt County Programs for Recovery, two blocks down. That is the Dual Recovery Program, two blocks down, and Healthy Moms, an outpatient drug treatment program for pregnant women. So it's right next to the uh, it's also two blocks away from Simprovirance. So the district already seems to be uh well-equipped for behavioral health services in that neighborhood. The size in of itself for a modest program was absolutely selected, having three actual dwellings on the property. Plus off-street parking, which is always a plus in facilities like this. I've searched for about four years looking for adequate properties and no other property has hit all of these markers. And uh it been on the market for approximately a year without a buyer, so we made an offer and uh we're giving it our best shot.
Do you mind uh staying up here, there may be, I know I have a a question or two for you. But I'll let the other commissioners go first if they have one for the applicant.
I I've never heard of a behavioral health district, can you um elaborate?
Uh well, behavioral health is really what they call uh uh therapy services for disorders. So people with uh eating disorders, people with gambling disorders, people with substance use disorders. Uh those are behavioral health, often called drug treatment services or things like that. But it's been recategorized because it used to just be called mental health services. And they've separated mental health and substance use services to be their own services. So behavioral health is the substance use disorder portion of mental health services.
And I wa- that wasn't my question, but that was helpful to hear the the breakout, um a district though. I've never heard of that term, is who would make the district, who establishes it as a district?
I don't think anyone establishes it, I just think that when certain levels of services congregate so close together, that it just becomes second nature to go. Uh these are where these uh services are currently operating. Uh the closer that we are to these services, because we do operate in the continuum with these services. Because I'm residential, the step-down service would be to outpatient to each one of those services.
So let me just take a whack at rephrasing what I think I'm hearing. So you're saying there's a kind of aggregation or congregation of like-minded facilities and services? That are kind of mutually beneficial in this area?
Yes, absolutely, and they're operating in outpatient level on the substance use side. And then you have the inpatient mental health Simprovirance Hospital, but they don't have any residential substance use treatment services there.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions.
How mu- how many employees would you be staffing?
Uh so there will be four directly on-site uh every day. That is three K or three substance use counselors and one case manager. There will be a live-in residential advisor, he is the twenty-four hour staff. There will be a uh part-time nurse, registered nurse that comes in and a medical director.
Is, are you going to fence in the property or leave as is?
Uh that all depends on what I'm allowed to do. Um I'm absolutely open to fencing in, I know that there are fencing requirements within that district. Anything too high has to be permitted. I don't really want to change the nature, the pedestrian nature of uh the neighborhood and the building. Um the thing about our facility is I actually operate a facility that is identical to this one in Myrtle Town. And if you didn't know what we were, you wouldn't know what we are. We operate extremely low-key, we've been operating there since nineteen seventy-five. We're the highest rated residential services on Google in Humboldt County with four point eight stars. And if we were a nuisance program, they would have ran us out of that neighborhood a long time ago.
What uh what outreach did you do with neighbors?
Uh so as per portion of this cell, requirement of the cell, I was not allowed to communicate with the neighbors. Until we were at the application portion, so that current tenants weren't spooked and she lost tenancy if the application didn't move forward. But my intention moving forward, if permitted, I intend on holding town halls to engage with the community. To express and build connections when concerned with the neighbors and the community as a whole.
And you started on this, it was one of my, one of my questions. Um talk a little bit more about Myrtle Town, compare and contrast, is this going to be, you know, a clone of that? Um I'll add that one of my questions ex parte to staff was uh what what is the experience of that address? And um you know, in two years, there's according to the chief of police, two call-outs to the Myrtle Town facility. One for a missing person, one for something else. So I would say that's, you know, one man's opinion, not not terrible.
Yeah.
So talk a little bit more about, you know. Who your clientele is, are they there voluntarily? What do they do when they leave uh the facility, uh that kind of thing?
Okay, so we are a three-point-one level of care residential service, which means that by the time a person arrives within our care. They have been stabilized, they've been background checked, we don't allow violent offenders, sex offenders or arsonists. Because we hold a high-value insurance policy, we absolutely can't serve that population. Uh our clients, on a day-to-day basis, are just people living together in a home. My current facility right now hosts fifteen men and those men live in the house, cook meals together. Go to groups on-site in campus and then have their appointments in the community with our case manager. They will stay with us for a period of up to four months and in that time, they will have become more stable. They will have connected with primary care, dental services, vision services, they will have gone to job markets, they would have built their resumes. They would have applied for jobs, they would have secured housing, some of them go to school and some of them get part-time jobs. Our security around our property, we have multiple security cameras, live-in staff that always observe. Every client must be checked out, they have to get a pass approved, they must have supports. And then when they return, they are drug tested, if anyone violates these very strict policies, they are removed from our facility.
Thank you. Other questions for the applicant?
Uh I guess I lied earlier, so the the difference between um. I I think it was in your application materials, like a met- a non-medical and a sober living facility was that you offer. Um like therapy and other services in addition to just helping people get sober?
Yes, so we have licensed staff, so we have an L P C C, which is a licensed clinical, professional clinical counselor. We have a doctor, we have a nurse and we have licensed substance use counselors. We host three groups a day that they're required to attend and that's what the group counseling room is for. So they're able, they're able to attend and learn coping skills, learn how to deal with codependency. They learn how to deal with cravings and urges and how to remain stable. Uh they help build better relationships and on the weekends, they have supervised family visits. So children visit our site every weekend, that's the level of safety that we have and hold within our facility.
So the clientele that would arrive at the facility would have already been sober to the point where they would pass a drug test?
Yes.
Then they would be subject to drug testing while staying at the facility?
Absolutely, we're about continuing success, we're about bolstering and supporting long-term success in a highly supportive environment. A lot of people are able to go to outpatient services and one group a week or two groups a week is sufficient to help keep them sober. But sometimes when they go to those groups and they go home back to their environment, they're not able to maintain that sobriety. So what happens is they're elevated to my level of care. So once they've stabilized and entered my care, they're surrounded by twenty-four hour support. In a group full of individuals doing three groups a day as opposed to two groups a week. And so that helps build that stability and that long-term habitual success that a person needs. That uh in order to maintain uh sobriety in our, in our society.
And it's a thirty-day turnaround?
Thirty days, so we do thirty-day approvals, uh but we also understand that sometimes thirty days isn't enough, so we do thirty, sixty, ninety and a hundred and twenty.
So it could be longer, but.
It could, yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'll just uh remind folks, we're in a spot here where the commission is asking uh questions of staff. Will take public comment in a a little bit longer. Um other questions for staff?
I want to thank you for the presentation, I covered one of the things I was going to ask you and I just want to verify. So uh state law currently allows us a facility of this sort for six people. And it's a, an automatically ministerial principally permitted use.
Correct, yeah.
So if they were to revise this proposal to six people, they could be denied tonight and still be operating tomorrow, basically.
As a small facilities, yes, yeah.
Okay.
I- if it's allowed in that uh zoning district.
And then my other question is, are there any zoning districts for large facilities of greater than six people that are not subject to a use permit?
I don't believe so, no, I can check that, or we can check that.
And then I guess last, I would just say, I mean, do we have any idea on the number of small facilities? Um we don't, we don't permit them directly, but th- that that currently exists within city limits, any kind of ballpark number?
Non-medical care housing large is principally permitted in downtown, downtown west, service commercial, neighborhood commercial, wabash. Um office residential, so the two um zone, mixed-use zoning districts where it's a conditional use. Is our Henderson Center and Hospital Medical.
Okay, so there are, there are a number of location, zonings that could allow it as a, okay. And and there, yeah, so within city, city limits, I'm, it will, in the Myrtle facility, is it even in city limits? It might be in the county if it's on Myrtle.
It's in city limits.
Yeah, because E P D calls to service would mean, imply that.
Okay, okay, those are my only questions.
Commissioner Benson, Commissioner Freitas? Um I have. Um, I have a few things I said that I contacted staff. I'm gonna quickly read off what I asked and summarize the answers. Um, I was just verifying that this is not actually a zoning change, just a conditional use permit. That was confirmed. I ask about whether there, some of the letters mentioned sequoia concerns um, and whether um, that was significant or had traction. And um, for the most part, that was either neutral or even positive as an adaptive reuse of an existing uh, potentially historic structure. And then uh, uh, I am concerned about uh, existing businesses um, being displaced, uh, which, you know, a property owner has the right to do. Um, but um, the, the answer is yes, there are operating businesses there that would no longer be able to operate there, but that could easily happen with some other kind of sale as well. And then the, the last thing, I'm, I'm going to ask this as a question and ask um, uh, staff to respond, even though you did respond to me in writing. But you know, the five, uh, could you bring up the presentation with the five um, required findings? And finding three is, you know, briefly consistency with existing and planned uses. And so, you know, something that occurs to me is that we're kind of walking a line here between the law that prevents discrimination against people with substance disorders. And um, you know, I will use the letter from Mr. Mattioli as an example where he said, you know, I've got a vacation rental next door. I would have to disclose this. I'm thinking that would impact that business. Um, and Henderson Center being primarily a commercial district, uh, is that um, a legitimate argument for incompatibility? Um, so how would, how would staff or uh, if we have the uh, city attorney on, um, what advice would you have for the commission on that?
This is actually a great opportunity for me to introduce our new deputy city attorney, Curtis Davis, who's sitting right here with us, who will now be at our uh, planning commission meetings.
We did not set this up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, you know, any analysis under our state discrimination statutes would really require a case-by-case, um, individualized facts regarding the scenario would be kind of pertinent for that analysis. So it's difficult to be able to provide um, anything um, other than what stated in the staff report that uh, addiction or recovery services does qualify as a disability under the Fair Employment and Housing Act. So um, denial on those grounds would create risk for discrimination concerns.
Understood. So the CUPA is coming to us at all because it's a large facility. Um, so as Director Kenyon pointed out in the, her written response to me, um, that, you know, is an intensity of use, not a, I'll paraphrase character of use. Um, I'm not quite sure what to do with that one, honestly, but I'm going to simmer on it. Uh, before we open for public comment, any last questions for um, staff?
Yeah, I um, I thought your question about compatibility was well phrased and um, we got an answer on the discrimination piece, but not on the compatibility piece, if anyone wants to speak to that.
Um, are you talking about compatibility in terms of residential um, in a commercial area or compatibility in terms of the intensity of use?
Yeah, I guess I would say intensity and, you know, any sort of um, argument for why we should be making finding three.
So when we're doing this analysis in the staff report, we're kind of looking at what the land use designations and the zoning and what the intention of those land use designation and zoning districts. And so the Henderson Center zoning district is a mixed-use zoning district. It promotes residence, residences as well as neighborhood serving commercial. So you can consider the residential treatment with its therapy portion of it, a personal service, right? So personal service like a massage or um, you know, any, even getting your dental cleaning. So in the staff report, the analysis kind of focused on that, how it was compatible with the intent of that district. And then also that it was on the edge of a higher intensity commercial district, which is now a mixed-use district. I mean, I know we think of it as commercial, but it is mixed-use. Residences are allowed. It's kind of on the edge, right? So with less intense single-family homes next, but next door. So um, as we shared in the staff report, it kind of acts as a buffer. So you know, it's part residential, part personal services, kind of felt like it fit in um, with the existing land uses there and the proposed.
Another thing to note is that uh, we have two areas in the city with pedestrian-focused frontages. One is Henderson Center and one is downtown. Um, and when on the street frontages that are designated pedestrian-focused frontages, you can only have residential on the ground floor if you hit a certain density. Um, otherwise your ground floor has to be commercial and we require high transparency, uh, 65% between like two and seven feet above the sidewalk. This particular property is outside of that pedestrian-focused frontage. It's not, um, it's beyond the limits of, of what's identified and required to meet those standards. And then another thing to note is that there was a new state law that passed in 2023, I believe, that limits our ability to require parking within a half mile of a major transit stop. And um, as identified by the regional transportation plan, uh, Humboldt County Association of Governments then updated our regional transportation plan to identify uh, the stop in Henderson Center as one of the major transit stops. So we are not allowed to um, require off-street parking um, in, at this property or anywhere in this area anymore, per state law.
Great, that was helpful. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions percolating here, I am going to open up for uh, public comment. Um, and this is a time for uh, anyone in, we'll, we'll start in the room and uh, you will have three minutes each. The green means you're good. The yellow means you're at, hit the 32nd mark. Red is the cutoff point, uh, and we will enforce it given the number of people in the room.
And we do have two folks online who have their hand up already. The owner and um,
Understood.
Property owner and somebody else, so.
Who's the second one?
Uh, just another person.
Okay. Um, I think I'll just stick with our, our normal habit of working the room first and um, then taking the Zoom comments. Please.
I think my biggest concern is we have so much mental health. What do we need another one for? The other thing is, is it seems to be a real problem here in town with all these, sorry, with all these um, clean and sober houses. There is no accountability. I have had two people out of my church, one I just removed four days ago from a clean and sober house. It was disgusting. The one, one of the windows in the bedrooms were broke. Glass was missing. Nobody could care less. There was no heat in one of the rooms. It was filthy. The other person lived in a house and that was on Eighth and I. There was another person that lived off of B Street. 21 people in the house, two bathrooms, no dishwasher that worked and one washer and dryer, six women in a room. So I know they, it sounds all really nice on the printout, but what concerns me is they say license. Who's checking the license? How often are they renewed? The other problem that really bothers me is supposedly 13 people can stay. So let's just be hypothetical and say, okay, so what's going to happen is, let's just say everybody leaves after 30 days. Where do these people go? Do they just homeless now in Henderson Center? That is the concern. That's a lot of people. There are people that have businesses and homes next door and I think that it's unfortunate. I, like I say, I don't know who has any compatibility. And the other question I have, I hate to be dumb, but I don't know what this means. What does CEQA mean? What, what does that mean? I don't know. Thank you.
And just to clarify on that last question, abbreviation.
My name is Thea Stewart. I live at 306 Grotto. I'm on that exact block. I have to tell you, the building we're talking about, the facility, is not compatible with a nice residential neighborhood. Period. Then, um, I happen to know there are 11 facilities I'm aware of regarding the same for alcoholics, drug addicts in Eureka. Do we need another one? Then it so happens that you, the planning commission, did not send notices out correctly at all. It used to be the city of Eureka, you had to send notices out to anyone within 350 feet of the location we're speaking of. You did not even do that. Well, actually, the city changed it to anyone within 1,000 feet. Actually, someone that's no more than six feet away from the property line of 309 Harris did not get a notice? I myself went around businesses and residential to let people know about this. And it happens that we're talking about the, on the 300 block of Grotto, there are businesses. They heard nothing. The 2,900 block of E heard absolutely nothing about this. Just same thing, Rite Aid, other businesses. Now across, directly across the street on Harris, a place used to be a video shop. It is being worked on to have its two offices. The owner of the property heard nothing. Okay, then, I'd also like to say, if you were to put this facility in, I will be damned if the city could do what you've done before. I know quite well what the city did at the facility on 14th and C Street. Originally, that was a house for alcoholics. Then all of a sudden, the city changed it as a detox center. I happen to know a family directly kitty-corner from that facility. They had nothing but problems 24 hours a day. People say they were drunk or wasted. They did not know what house to go to. They had their doors knocked on 24 hours a day. People would walk up their stairway, vomit. They would leave bottles, cans, cigarettes on their lawn. Sometimes people would pass out on their lawn. We do not want this in Henderson Center.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Neil Tarpey. I am here with my wife. We are the property owners. And we did get a card in the mail, which is how we, uh, I thank you for sending it, how we got notice of this. Uh, we live in the 2,900 block of William Street and I look around the room tonight and I see neighbors uh, from our block. And just as a brief introduction, I'd say that uh, I spent approximately 25 years of my working career, first as the county substance abuse prevention coordinator. I worked for adult drug court. I worked 10 years as the family and group counselor at St. Joseph Hospital's Family Recovery Service. And I worked for Project Challenger, which was a combined effort of the sheriff's department, mental health, and probation. So I've spent quite a bit of my working career, I'm retired now thankfully, uh, dealing with alcoholics and addicts. I come here not to impose my viewpoint, to just expose it and what I think. When I read through this afternoon, I did look at all whatever 32 or 34 pages that were prepared online. I don't know this gentleman at all, uh, Mr. Harrison, or I do know of Crossroads, obviously, because I've worked in the field for several decades. I am in support of the conditional use permit. We've had situations during the daytime where addicts, I had an addict arrested on my front steps by the K-9 unit while my pit bull was sleeping inside. Great home protection, right? So the fact that these people are going to be seeking treatment does not mean that if without them, there wouldn't be no drug activity at Henderson. And unfortunately, I see uh, people that own businesses here tonight too, that could vouch for the fact that there's no place in town that there's not going to be alcoholics, addicts walking around the street. I will say that uh, on attachment two, page two, uh, I found a couple of things that I would just bring up as questions. It says these are talk therapy groups who will not be a noise or activity nuisance. I'm going to tell you folks, any group therapy worked at Salt is going to be crying, screaming, yelling, and people getting their feelings out. So I would hate to see they got their uh, permit revoked because people are making noise inside this frosted window. And between the hours of uh, 5:00 and 8:30 the next morning, there's going to be quiet time. I don't think that's realistic. Any of us have gone camping, know that 10 o'clock does not necessarily mean quiet time for everybody. So I think I'd hate to see if these people get their permit, they're kicked out for making noise. But we're in favor of it and we live within 300 feet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Whoever's next?
Hi. Thank you guys for your service. Appreciate your being there. Some nights it's not so easy. Anyway, I did write a note and I was quoted by Michael regarding that, uh, but I'll repeat it if I may. All right. Um, we are the, I think you were referring to me a couple of times, Mr. Mattioli, a couple of times on the, we're the, yeah, thank you. We are right next door, uh, and all these years it's been a FedEx. And she's had apartment building there and there's been a little cottage in behind. And it's been, you know, easy to get along with and that is a commercial use and that's what we expect. So we're surprised to see this. And uh, but, and we got the notice. And we do operate this vacation rental next door and I did go through all of the planning department and this is a permitted use. Uh, I had to do all the handicap accesses and the bathroom and the ramps and all that. So, and it's a acceptable, a use there next door. Uh, but we are very concerned about the negative impact that this will have on this vacation home. It is clear that we will be required to inform potential guests that there is a drug treatment facility next door. Any guest informed of such a situation will be very reluctant to want to book our house. I think this will have an impact on it and that's our real big concern. The description of this facility wherein the occupants will be guarded 24 hours a day reflects the possible impacts that this has had in the past in other neighborhoods. If you've got to have somebody there watching him 24 hours a day, and different from an apartment building, it's, it's a concern and, and that's our concern. So we therefore oppose this facility. Um, it was mentioned earlier about um, uh, the facility across the way where you have young ladies uh, who are uh, being protected. And uh, I, I think that having a facility like this might have a negative impact on them too. And I've learned about, I'm not going to say where it was, but you guys may know already. So I think that's my point here is it has a negative impact as well as, because I'm in the real estate business, I will tell you, it's going to negatively affect real estate in the direct area as to values. So that's my point. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattioli.
I forgot to give my name. Did I give my name? Oh, you know my name. Okay, it's Mark Mattioli. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kelly Giampolo and I'm the business on the other side of Mark Mattioli or on the other side of the proposed um, business. Um, my business is a fine jewelry store and I just bought this commercial building about uh, eight months ago. And I moved around the corner. I've been in Henderson Center for 10 years, so I moved around the corner from Grotto into this building. It's the old Brighton Mortgage Building. But anyhow, I'm going to just tell you a little bit about myself and um, I have written a letter already really citing my concerns, um, which I hope you received. But um, anyhow, um, again, my name is Kelly Giampolo. I'm a fifth generation Humboldt County native. I was born in Arcata. I'm a graduate at Humboldt State Polytech. Um, I have a bachelor's degree in jewelry. I'm a first-generation jeweler. I'm a first-generation jeweler. I've created my jewelry business on my own, from the ground up. I opened my jewelry store in 2015 in Henderson Center, and I proudly have served the Henderson Center community for 10 years. I'm the first woman in my family to own a commercial property, and again, I've only had for eight months. This commercial property is right next to the proposed zoning site for this residential rehab. Right now, this notice that is given to me on January 29th, it's been really hard to figure out and wrap my brain around and understand it with detail. There's a lot of missing pieces and holes that leaves people in our community very scared. This process, I think, could, in itself, could be completely revised. The way it's been hidden and a secret, and it leaves for misinformation, misunderstanding, and people are really scared. Me being one of them, because I am literally right next to them, and they're building over that building where they're going to be living. The 12 men rehabbed, rehabbing are going to be overlooking my jewelry business. Anyhow, I'm facing this challenge, and it threatens my livelihood and the business I built. This is like my dream. And I met with Wesley on my own, I tried, I found him, right? I just like was trying to figure out this, what's going on here? What's happening? What is this program? Still don't quite understand all of it. But I did my due diligence, and I see his dream, and I understand it, but I have mine, too, and they just don't seem to fit together at all. I believe in recovery. I support people getting help they need, but by placing this facility next to me creates very hardship, severe hardships for me. I'm going to have to make some very big changes to make things safe for me and my clients. I am not standing up just for myself, but for my customers, my fellow business owners, and the integrity of this neighborhood. The Henderson Center community is my family, and I won't let this hardship break the trust and safety we've built together. My business is my lifeline, my passion, and my sense of connection. This is just like what my life is. It's, oh, gosh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jack Ricky. I'm the president of Henderson Center Merchants Association. Just want to say that we're very concerned as the business community, and having everybody on the street, you know, the Henderson Center, in the last couple of years, we have a lot, lot more homeless spending the night and stuff like that. So, we're concerned with the residents and the business community, and just we're opposing this also. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jose Tony Gomez, and I'm a resident at 1804 Wabash on C Street, and I live right across the street from one of the sober facilities. And having my house there for, I've owned it for seven years. I've had a couple of incidences. I've had sneakers that on fire and thrown across the street. And I'm currently, I'm a forester, and I'm the one that actually addressed some of the concerns of CEQA being met. These build, the building, 309 Harris Street, is a historic building. It doesn't have to be registered in a registry, but it meets all the criterias for the office, under the Office of Historic Preservation, to be dealt with in the CEQA map. It is 116 years old. It has Victorian features, and it belongs to a historic district. And yes, in the Office of Historic Preservation, a district is defined as an area of similar age buildings and structures, and those offer warrant protection. This building, if they go according to this plan, they will have to do some structural changes. They'll have to add a second exit for the residents living in the second floor. So, that's going to trigger CEQA, because they're going to change the facade of the building, and they will also have to make changes, a seismically retrofit, because once again, this building's 116 years old, and it will have to need, be brought up to code to have, be seismically retrofitted. So, these are the concerns for me. I also have a Victorian. My house is built in 1882, and I love Eureka, because this area has so many historic homes. And I've seen so many homes that have fallen by the wayside, and I'm just concerned that we're going to be losing these homes that are no longer built. And they have style, they have those styles. So, if they are going to be, CEQA's not going to prevent them from building it, but they're just going to have them do it right, and make sure that it's following the law, which is, under the California Environmental Quality Act, requires to have an archaeologist assess it, or have someone go assess it before they make major changes. Because once those changes happen, they cannot be reversed. You cannot go back and make, the old growth redwood only, is no longer available. These houses are built with old growth redwood, and if you don't have, you can't just go to Home Depot or Lowe's and rebuild them. So, yes, there's a lot of concern. I just would ask the commission to take the time and make sure you're going through the right channels for CEQA, because once the damage is done, it cannot be undone. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Pesh, and I'm, well, first off, I appreciate the commission for what you do in your service. Alex, I appreciate the application you prepared for us. I'm the broker that brought the buyer and the seller together in this transaction. I think the toughest part of having these CUPs is you are opposing some of your neighbors and your community members. I think what I did when I was introduced to Wesley, he approached me about the project, is with my years of experience, I had to think about the fit it would have in the community, its location relative to the neighbors. And so, I met Wesley, I was very impressed with the leadership of the council. I got to meet the board of directors along the way, when we're doing our due diligence before we even made an offer. And I went to his facility a couple times, and I was, I was really impressed with the level of care they gave for their program. I feel that there's a misconception relative to what their program is and what I'm hearing from some of the opposition. These are people that have got past the first step, so to speak. They are moving towards another step, and they're being cared for. I think what really made me feel comfortable in explaining this to the seller was that there's a large emphasis in the residential component of this program and the therapy sessions that it offers. That's what impressed me. That's why I felt comfortable for where it was located. It's not my option. It's up to the buyer to make the decision if they want to make an offer, understanding the CUP conditions. So, here we are. So, I just want the planning commission to remember that there's a large emphasis on the residential component with the support of the therapy that's behind it. And I feel comfortable with the group that's there. There's a lot of supervision, and that's what I personally, you know, I'm comfortable with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pesh. Any others within the, within the chambers? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for being here. My name is Leanne Zek. I am the manager at the American Cancer Society Discovery Shop in Henderson Center. I also worked at Healthy Moms, and I also spent eight years in law enforcement. So, I kind of have a unique perspective of this. I know, I'm part of the Henderson Center merchant as well. We work really hard to keep Henderson Center a place for families to come, for people to have lunch, to shop, to just experience Eureka. We all love Eureka. And I think we all agree that what Wesley is proposing is a needed thing in our community, but I just don't feel it's right for Henderson Center. Like I said, we clean up already from the homeless people that we see. We do a lot of work. We try to have events, try to make things, and we have our farmer's market, we have our Halloween, we have our, just try to make it a real community place, because Eureka needs that. We walk everywhere, and we see the need of rehabs and things like that. We know, we know it's needed. But we need to also, for the people that get up and work every day, we need a place that we can go to and just experience a good Eureka. And I just feel like bringing that over just adds something that we just, we don't need in Henderson Center. And that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Diana Livingston. I'm on the Board of Directors for Crossroads North Coast Substance Abuse Council, and I've been with the agency in different forms for over 15 years. One of the things I want to address is, I also own a Victorian that was built in 1883. I want to say that the, the way this house looks right now, it's run down. Go walk by it and take a look. It needs painting, it needs windows, it needs a lot of work. We have the money to do that work, to bring this house to look correct. And I want to talk about CEQA. The house has already been changed internally. We would not be the first people going in, making changes. It is already, it has different apartments within it that people live in. So, what we would actually be doing is making it more of a house that fits altogether. It has more than one kitchen in it now. It will have one kitchen after we're finished with the renovations that we need to do. I also want to speak as a person who, I drive through Henderson, I don't live in Henderson Center, but I drive through it every day. It's where I go do banking, it's where I, I consider it part of my neighborhood. And what's, so I'm not as close to it as the people who actually work there. But when I'm driving up Harris Avenue, the frontage of this property is on Harris Avenue. You can't get to Henderson, what I consider Henderson Center, you can't get to from the property itself. I mean, you have to walk out to Harris and go down Harrison to go down E Street or F Street, and, which really separates it. Well, the first time I went there, I, I was trying to feel the sense of Henderson Center, and I didn't feel it, because it's not, the stores in Henderson Center, I do respect that the woman who spoke, who has a jewelry shop, her jewelry shop's in a house. And I, I fully respect what she's doing as a business. I also want to speak to the fact that in our Myrtle Avenue locations, we don't get complaints from our neighbors. The people who are here are not like, they are managed. If they can't be managed, they leave, they are taken out of the facility and taken somewhere else. I also want to speak to the need of the community to support people getting healthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought I'd come up and just try to clarify exactly what our services are, because in comparison, I've heard several other locations and services being used to categorize my services that are just not accurate in comparison. I heard about the C Street Detox being utilized and compared to what a service brings to a neighborhood. And I heard about a Wabash Sober Living House being used as a comparison tool. And I just want to remind the community that I am none of those things. I am not a walk-in detox service that requires people to be under the influence to receive services. I am not a sober living house that has no supervision. I heard the questions of, who licenses us? The State of California Department of Healthcare Services licenses us. Medicaid licenses us. Partnership licenses us, and the County of Humboldt Department of Health and Human Services licenses us. All of these are permitted and audited annually and semiannually. My annual audit is coming up in May for my current facility. We have passed these audits for 50 years. We hold these certificates because we meet the high standards required of substance use treatment facilities. There's state regulations that we have to abide by, that sober living houses that people are describing here don't have to abide by. They're just a house that puts people in and collects rent. We are required to meet 100 times that standard for our living conditions and our services provided. We take great pride in the building and facilities we own. Our goal is to beautify this property. We envision holding and preserving the historic facade of the building, going internally, upgrading the electrical, the appliances, repairing any broken windows, keeping the original window work there. We plan on repainting the parking lot, redoing the landscaping, and adding value to the community. I understand the concerns of the neighborhood. I hear that there already is a homeless problem in Henderson Center, and I'm not even there. It, it shocks me to hear that my services would be attached to bringing that problem when the problem is already there. My services are actually an effort to limit and stifle that problem, because we take individuals that are on their pathway to landing in homelessness, and we stop them, and we support them, prevent them from falling off, and put them back in society. That is our goal, and we have the ability to take on this very large renovation project that most anyone else won't be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you again.
I just wanted to let you know, my name is Nancy Riley, and we have a home at 2956 D Street, and it's just across the street from the jewelry shop. But nobody has still answered the question, when these people are rehabilitated, where do they go? They just go out the front door? Nobody has really given any, you know, you say they have a job or they have this. That doesn't always hap-
Ma'am, you've already had your three minutes and asked that question, and it's not our job to answer that question.
Well, you let him up here twice, I figured I could.
That was one time during public comment.
I'm Jackie Macbeth. I live in Eureka. I have for over 50 years. I frequent Henderson Center a lot. I frequent Kelly's Jewelry Store a lot, and I can see that it would be a problem. One of my concerns, and I, I know we need mental health and we need rehab rehabilitation places, but I don't know if you realize, most of these people, when they get these, they do not have to pay property tax. So, this building right now has property tax on it, and my understanding, we have 11 around N Street that are around, none of them are paying property tax. So, that's money that's taken away from facilities or appliance or services for our city. So, I'd like you to look at that as one, excuse me, one thing. And I think it could be a different place than Henderson Center. You've got the video store, it's changing. You've also got, I think it's Dr. Stokes, that's planning on building a unit that's almost across the street from it. I really don't think it would be a good place for there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Connie Beck. I'm the Health and Human Services Director for the county. A couple of things that I, I feel like I need to say, we, Health and Human Services has contracted with this program for decades. I recently just submitted a letter hoping that they will get approval for an additional grant for funding for their services. They've been instrumental in the work that we're doing around substance use disorder in our county, and actually in our state. For years, the county didn't have funding, the county had to fund services, and then several years ago, the state changed, and we were able to fund it through Department of Healthcare Services. Wes and his team stepped up and had the Department of Healthcare Services, met the- Um, requ- met the re- the requirements, um, for those services. They are licensed and certified. Um, they are able to bill for their services. Um, and have outstanding, um, work that's done there. We, I think we can all agree that we need additional services in our county. Um, I think you heard that, uh, Wes said that he had been looking for a facility. Um, for, for years. Um, and this property has been available for over a year. Um, there, I, I don't see anyone else, uh, wanting to purchase the property at this time. Um, I, I just, I, I can't say enough about his program and the services. I guess the other thing that I would add is Semper Virens has also been in this area for fifty years. And, um, they also serve dual diagnosis clients. Um, it is inpatient. We also have the Healthy Moms Program and many other programs outpatient services in the area. Um, and, and I. I don't know that folks realize that because that's all work that's done internal and not outside, um, the building. So. I, I just want to say I am all for, um, Wes and this work that's, that's being proposed here and. Um, I hope that you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Field and I live a block from where, um. This. Facility is going in. I think that. We really need to have some kind of a town hall meeting or something because I had no idea this was coming in. I think it sounds like an amazing. Amazing organization, Crossroads. I used to be the Confidential Secretary to the Director of. Health and Human Services in Lassen County for many years and I know these. We need, we really need this kind of a program. But I think where they want to put it is totally the wrong place. This is Henderson Center. That is a part of, definitely a part of Henderson Center. When I'm walking to the stores and things. I go that, down the street and right, right in front of that. Um, I'm concerned about, there are nine parking spaces. You're going to have twelve residents. And staff there. So that means the parking already. Our streets are right in front of my house. I live on the corner of D and Grotto. And you know, that's parking for Henderson Center really. So it, it's going to impact more of the street parking. Um. Was interesting to find out that I lived within a behavioral health district. I never heard that before. I'm curious if there's a curfew, um, for the people that are, will be living in the facility. Because. What do they do at night? Henderson Center where the shops are, you know, we, we walk to the restaurants and everything there at night and if. The residents are hanging out in front of the storefronts and that kind of thing. It's going to be a little bit intimidating. But. I really think they need to have some kind of a meeting and let the people of Henderson Center that live there. Um. Know what's going on. This was just, I didn't know about it until a few days ago when my neighbor told me about it. We really need to have some kind of a meeting. And get some input from the Henderson Center. People, but. It just seems like an inappropriate place for a wonderful program. I, um, we need that kind of a program, but that's the wrong, wrong place to put it. And I am curious what, if there is a curfew and I, sorry, I get nervous if I'm in front of. People, but anyway, I would like to know, you know, if there's a curfew and what do the residents do? Do they? Have cars? Will they be going somewhere else or anyway?
Thank you. I, I will, we don't normally answer questions, but when you mentioned curfew twice, the applicant did nod his head twice for what that's worth.
Hi, my name is April Harrison and I am Wes's spouse. Um, Wes has worked for the last four years searching for a facility. And everybody in the community is continuously saying, we do need more of this. We do need more of this. But we don't want it in our neighborhood. If not in our neighborhood, then where? He's searched for, for quite some time for a facility that would host and support. What he, what he needs for this to, to go on. There is curfews for the, for the clients. Um, they are supposed to be in, um, at a certain time. Um, I believe it's nine o'clock in the evening. Um, not a lot of the, um. Of the clients have vehicles, um, maybe one or two at a time has a vehicle. Um, and, um, they are located near CVS and the Dollar Store in Myrtle Town currently. And, um, the clients aren't standing around in front of the storefronts, causing problems, harassing the, the patrons or anything like that. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to come up and clarify some of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Newman.
I'm back. Mike Newman here, uh, former Humboldt County Planning Commissioner and. I think, um, you've heard a few things here and part of that is, um. Possibility of, um, incompatibility, uh, with, uh. The, um, vacation rental next door as well as the jewelry store next door. Um. I know that when I was on the County Planning Commission, when we had something coming up where there was a lot of residential. And, um, other people in the area kind of coming up and, and asking things and, and. Um, not sure about what will be going on. That you pump the brakes and give a chance to have the community meet about this. You've heard about, uh, not being, um. Uh, notified, uh, many people in the area. It's an opportunity to bring that out a bit more. Uh, so my proposal for you is to allow the applicant to meet with. Uh, the people in the area and concerned citizens. Uh, to address many of these things here that are being brought out. Um, and then bring it back again after that point. So that is an option that you have on the planning commission. Besides passing it tonight or denying it. So with that, thank you.
Thank you again. Any el- anybody else in the room? All right, seeing none, um, let's move to the, uh, property owner on Zoom.
I think her name is Stormy, Stormy, so.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your service. I finally get to talk. Um. I'm Stormy Batiga, the current owner of the property. I'd like to share my experience over the last five years being active in my community here in Central Oregon with drug and alcohol rehabilitation. I'm currently the Central Oregon Al-Anon and Alateen Public Outreach Coordinator. And I do inspirational speaking classes and presentations at local homeless shelters. So I have personal experience with like-minded organizations relative to the current buyer and applicant for this CUP. I moved from Eureka over eighteen years ago and still have family and friends living there, so I frequently visit. It is sad and disappointing to see how much it has deteriorated since I left, especially with the homeless folks wandering the streets. More than once I've been threatened, being yelled at, cursed at, and I do not feel safe at all being alone and visiting local businesses there. This is no longer limited to the waterfront and Second Street areas and we have been seeing this spread to the Henderson Center area. And in fact, have had many reports of homeless trying to camp at my property. More than sixty percent of the homeless are statistically on drugs or alcohol and have mental illness. I have two friends that are nurses at Saint Joseph's Hospital and have been told that seventy to eighty percent of the admitted people. Are drug and alcohol related with detox, overdose and other illnesses due to their substance abuse. It is a trickle-down effect. We need to get these people off the streets and the help they need. Would you rather have them roaming the streets or in a facility like this getting this help? I hear the public concerns about safety, theft, vandalism, et cetera. But if we don't allow and offer more of these resources in our communities, the problem will continue to grow and get much worse. I personally feel that this property is perfectly set up for this type of occupancy and should be allowed. This is a start to fixing the problem. I want to comment on the fact that I'm familiar with rehab centers and their ratings and most rehab centers. Or this type of facility don't get high ratings. It's unbelievable that they would be in business since nineteen seventy-five and have a four-point-eight rating. I think the model of their business is being misunderstood. I want to ask the city to go back and look because I believe when I bought the property and remodeled it and rezoned it for daycare insurance, we had to do retrofitting for earthquake at that time. My understanding is that this current use, we wouldn't even be here tonight if Wesley bought the property and used it for six-bed operation. The only reason we're here is he's trying to get twelve beds. Otherwise, this deal probably would have been closed.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Batiga.
Huh?
Thirty seconds.
I want to apologize. Um, I've been remiss in my repair and maintenance, being an out-of-state property owner. I know that Wesley plans to do wonderful things with this property and bring it back to its original beauty. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. We see Virginia with a hand up. We can't hear you, Virginia.
We hear you, but it's very quiet.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'll start by saying that I did not receive any information or notice from the planning department that this application and hearing were occurring. Nor did the tenants currently living in the structures being discussed tonight. We all found out because a neighbor gave us copies of a meeting notice over this past weekend. I did hear the explanation that notices are mailed to homeowners and not the tenants. I think as, uh, neighboring prom- property tenants, we should have the right to know and an opportunity to speak as well. Moving on to my concerns, I share a property line and fence with the lot being discussed tonight. This property runs alongside my entire backyard and overlooks my yard. Whatever is happening at this lot is heard in my backyard and inside my house. I am a survivor of domestic violence and I have severe PTSD and physical injuries. I am worried that there could be violence that will be so triggering to my PTSD, I would need to move and I can't afford most of the housing in Eureka. Living next to this number of men will certainly trigger my PTSD. It was not mentioned in the application that this would be a strictly male facility. In line with the applicant's goal of protecting health, safety and welfare of our community, I am requesting that in addition to background checks and policy. That there will be no sex offenders and arsonists, there be absolutely no violent offenders. While the mental health and disabilities of the clients is important, my mental health and disabilities are important too. And that of my neighbors. I urge the commission to consider what is good for all persons in the neighborhood. I am also concerned about theft. I understand that this facility would be classified as a Level Four Treatment Center. If this project moves forward, I would like there to be an explicit document, documented agreement, perhaps in the resolution. That this rehab facility will always be a Level Four facility and will not become a Level One Detox Center. Um, I wanted to point out a few facts. There are four bedrooms in this Victorian, meaning there would be three plus men per room. Uh, I would also like to point out that there are tenants in the structures who did not know about this whatsoever. And learned that they would probably be losing their housing through a flyer passed through our neighborhood. Uh, I want to advocate for Kelly. She's worked so hard for her fine jewelry store. Um, and across the street there, building a new mortgage office. All of this is high-end and I worry about the fit. I also want to correct a previous comment I heard tonight. You do not need to go to Harris to get to Henderson Center. Um, from this property, there is a gate that goes through the alleyway behind my house and several of the businesses. Um, including the laundry. Uh, the bakery, Cafe Nooner, et cetera. Um, I'm also concerned about the parking. D Street is already heavily impacted by the DHHS facility. Uh, any additional parking would have to, um, require walking, uh, a little ways.
All right. Thank you, Virginia. That's time. Do we have others with their hands up on Zoom?
Not seeing anyone.
All right. Uh, with that, I will, uh, close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion. It's a bit of a tough one. Where do we want to jump in?
Super tough. Could we just start with an explanation of CEQA? Can you pick that up really quick?
Yeah. So CEQA does say that, um, if, I have the exact language here.
And CEQA is the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you.
And, um, it applies whenever a local or state. Agency, um, is making a discretionary decision. So in this case, we have a discretionary use permit. Um, so CEQA is tri- triggered and we have to evaluate the environmental impacts of. Um, the, the project under CEQA.
Thank you. Yeah, that was mostly my question since it came up in public comment.
Do we want to speak to the Class One exemption being cited?
Yeah, I can do that. So, um, we use the Class One exemption in existing facilities as outlined in the staff report because it's. Basically an apt adaptive reuse of a property that's already been used for residential uses as well as commercial uses. And then in the California Environmental Quality Act, the CEQA guidelines. Um, it does say that a categorical exemption, which is what is proposed in the staff report tonight. Uh, shall not be used for a project which may cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of a historical resource. So. On that property, there are three structures. One of them, the modernist commercial building with the large storefront windows is the only structure listed in the Green Book. Um, which is the city's, uh, you know, uh, definitive guide to what the lead, the city as lead agency has determined that could be eligible as, as a historic resource. Now, the residents, yes, they're old. Um, but it's not, none of these structures are on the local register of historic places. And I believe the other structure that the letter had mentioned is. Is on the local register, but it's next door. It's not part of this project. So, um. Doing improvements to allow the building to be habitable is not a signif- this, as lead agency and you acting on it. We do not believe that that would have been a significant change in a historical resource. So we, um, believe that the Class One facilities is appropriate. I'm sorry, I could add a little bit more too. Um, I do want to talk, uh, also mention that there, that, um, historic properties, there's the Secretary of Stand. The Secretary of the Interior's Standard for the Treatment of Historic Properties. Now, if this property was on the local register, we would have to follow those guidelines. And these guidelines do allow for the adaptive reuse of historic structures as well. So.
Thank you for that.
It's a lot to unpack here. Um. First, I believe, you know. It's a rundown house. Rundown, it, from what everyone has been saying, pictures kind of verify that a little bit as well. And, um, having renovated things myself, including, you know, Victorians and things like that. I understand the costs are immense. So you're going to be. Hiring a multitude of people, putting money into the community. Um. To fix this, which is right on the road for everybody to see. Um, as far as that. As far as the the man with the jewelry store, and I understand how much work you put in to make that great, but to deny someone the same opportunity because their business is different, I'm not sure if that's exactly correct either. But there is a lot to unpack here, and I think, was it Mike Newman, had stated that we don't have to either deny or approve today, but maybe get a collective group together to discuss it further, maybe would be an option as well. I just feel like Wes has been vilified a little bit, and I actually have personal experience with Crossroads. You guys have an outfit in Wrangell, Alaska. And I used to do commercial fishing there. And so I've actually seen firsthand what the program has done for people. And to have a four point eight rating, a lot of a lot of people have been talking highly. I think for anyone that opposes it, maybe go check out his facility in Myrtle. And, and see what he does before you pass judgment, us included maybe. And I just think that anyone that's trying to pump income and create jobs, you're going to have four people, four full-time employees is a good thing. And there was a lot of like, we need it, but not here. Well, from my understanding, there was two areas in Eureka that would allow this. Am I wrong on that? So if not this, then where? That's just kind of some of the thoughts. There was just a lot to unpack with this situation. So that's just kind of some of my thoughts. I don't know.
I just had, I do have a question because I wish I knew the answer, but I don't. And that is with regard to noticing, is it customary that we only notice property owners and not tenants, or do we notice both?
Our code requires noticing three hundred feet property owners in the inland zoning code, which is the requirement under state law. In the coastal zone, we also notice residents because the coastal commission regulations require that as well. We could definitely explore updating our regs. There's nothing preventing us from noticing more broadly than what is the minimum requirement of state law.
Okay. Because I think this tonight illustrates why there's a benefit. And it shouldn't be on the select group of property owners to alert the actual tenancy, especially in a commercial district like this where tenancy is not going to be necessarily the same as a property owner. So I think that's, that is a little troubling. That's about the only thing that would give me pause on taking action tonight, frankly. But I do have some ideas about moving forward, but I'd be interested in letting the other commissioners give their thoughts before I.
Is mail the only way of informing currently the surrounding residents?
We do also post a public meeting sign on the site as well.
What about a phone call? No?
We don't have their numbers. We don't have people's numbers.
I'll say, I agree with Commissioner Lazar that adopting what we do in the coastal zone for the inland zone, I would, I would be supportive of that. I think that's part of how we got here. I think the secrecy in the property negotiations is another part. And while from a business perspective, I get it, I, I do think it's regrettable. Whether we act, I'm seventy thirty leaning toward acting tonight, but whether we act tonight or not, I, I think Crossroads has work to do in the neighborhood. Should this go forward or should we delay it to a later time? You know, I think there may well be misunderstandings, but they're entirely understandable misunderstandings. And secrecy is, it just breeds it. I don't have a ton of thoughts on the, beyond that.
I would like to give my thoughts on the historical. This is just my personal feeling, not, not trying to act as an expert. I have raised this in the past and DLO will probably recognize that. It's unfortunate in our city that structures that are not listed are not treated as historical structures. And frankly, I don't find that to be a compelling argument in terms of SEQA because SEQA does include language in one five oh six four point five that says a structure doesn't have to be listed to be considered a historical structure. And I don't know that the list in Eureka is definitive because property owners were given the opportunity to opt out. Ready for the having said that? Having said that, I don't believe that anything I've heard with regard to the proposals to fix up this building would affect this structure's integrity, should it be in fact determined to be historical. So that's my feeling with regard to that point that was raised. However, I'm willing to call the bluff on that. That means that there shouldn't be changes to the fenestration of the structure, the windows, the doors, openings, historical fabric, like the siding, the window materials themselves should be, remain intact and be, you know, kept as part of any renovation or rehabilitation effort. And I didn't hear anything about additions or enlargements, only interior changes. So if that is in fact the plan, then I don't see a problem with that issue if we're talking about the things that we've raised, that were raised tonight. I do think as a way to kind of move things forward, one option that was, I think, offered in one of our public comments or maybe one of the written ones, and one that I'm a fan of, is requiring a monitoring report in certain circumstances. And I think a presentation to the decision-making body on, on performance at at least an interval that gives, let me say that less cryptically. Bringing this back, not for reapproval, but for a report at some point in the future, whether it's a year, six months, two years, at a certain point where we can then see we had trepidation at the hearing, were those fears realized? You know, and that gives enough of a period so that the operator can show that they are responsive to the issues and are dynamically addressing them. And by the time, whatever that interval is, can show that they either succeeded in operating in a compatible fashion or didn't. And then doesn't give the commission the ability to then suddenly revoke the permit, but it does give the commission to weigh in and provide direction on enforcing the conditions and obligations that were made as part of the use permit. So that is a way I could see moving forward tonight. If, if the applicant was willing to accept that condition, something along those lines could give some opportunity for. It doesn't mean they couldn't have a town hall meeting in the wake of the decision either and solicit additional feedback. But it would provide a way of holding them accountable and getting a report back on whether in fact the fears that we're hearing and the concerns are in fact warranted. So I'm just going to throw that out there.
This is, yeah, a tricky one because a lot of people care and a lot of people have different opinions about what should happen. But I will say I would definitely be in favor of making a decision tonight. I don't think that having a meeting with the neighbors, although I definitely think that should happen, maybe more than one, I don't think that would necessarily change the scope of the project or anything that you're requesting we approve. If it did, there are things that could potentially be negotiated outside of this meeting. So I don't think it would necessarily assist us in making our decision to have that meeting first. That would be my perspective on it. I would be interested in trying to craft a motion that would allow us to bring back some kind of report, a one-time report, it sounds like maybe would be the concept. I would potentially also be interested in adding something that would commit the facility to continuing as a level four facility, which I think would be implied, but just something to give some peace of mind to the neighbor who spoke online. Generally, I agree with what was said by others in the commission and I'm sympathetic to the businesses and neighbors who have concerns. But I do think that this is going to be a facility that won't have significant impacts and is doing a real community service to people that need it. And these are not homeless people. This will be their home. And I think they will hopefully treat it as such. So that being said, would a commissioner like to try and craft some additions to the motion? I could take a stab at it, but it would be ugly. So I would be interested in having help.
Well, could we get a planning director and maybe counsel to weigh in on if, if my concept of a, of a report back to the commission and at a certain interval is something we can pursue as a requirement of the permit? And what maybe would be an appropriate interval for bringing it back?
I don't see an issue with it. I'd like to just ask our attorney to weigh in.
Good evening again. Our code does have a section for applying these conditions for approval. The concern there is, we also have other code sections that are meant to address some of the concerns that have been mentioned tonight, like the revocation section. And so the concern becomes if adding conditions is perhaps exceeding the authority that this commission has by taking action that should be reserved for the council. The type of condition that you're proposing just to receive more information probably doesn't rise to that level. So, yeah.
I, I actually, full disclosure, I work as a planner for the county and I recently revisited what our code said about revocation and how it can be invoked. And could you bring the public and us up to speed in how that process is dictated under the city code?
Yep, I'll defer to.
We have a slide with all the ways that you can revoke the permit. So I think really.
Not, not the grounds for revocation, but the actual how it gets triggered.
Yeah. So someone would come in with a complaint of the listed items there and then the city would investigate and say, yeah, you know, there's an issue here and we would do a notice public hearing, just like now. So I believe the last time I saw this happen was for a doggy daycare off of Jacobs. There was up for permit revocation, but that was like five years ago. So it has happened.
So it's customary that it's initiated by the planning department and brought to the planning commission?
No, I think it can be initiated by anyone.
But it goes straight to the council?
No, it comes to planning commission. It says a permit may be revoked by the review authority that originally approved the permit.
And just adding to that, our code says prior to initiating the proceedings to revoke a permit, the department must notify the property owner of the permit violations, identify necessary corrections, and establish a reasonable period within which the property owner must correct the violations. And if the property owner has not corrected violation within the specified period, the department may proceed with the process to revoke the permit.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like we can't impose a condition, but we have to be careful on how we do it. Is that fair to say?
Would it be the case, this is a weird one. If we pass the, approve the project with conditions and the applicant hated the conditions, is that appealable to the city council?
Yes.
I mean, it makes the whole process, project part of that appeal, but, but there is recourse right away if that was desired. And is level, I'll just take a shake or nod of the head probably, is level four the accurate description? Okay. All right. Well, I don't know you as a motion crafter. I'm not great and the two people on the ends are so much better than I am. So I think we're approaching the place when one of you, not me, takes what we've got to start with here and.
Well, it was Commissioner Lazar's idea, so I would suggest he try it first.
Can I just get your feedback director, can you, just what you think would be a reasonable time period to give? For.
They really have to be in operation for.
Yeah, we definitely want to set it from the date of operation initiating.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I was going to say it might take him a while. I mean, I would, if, if.
A year from the date of operation or two years?
If they're circling thirty to a hundred and twenty days, I think maybe six months max. So then there, there have been some groups that have circulated through there and gotten at least a new group, right? If it's four months max, and you go a little past that for one person, so I would recommend six months.
Okay. So I, I'm just gonna, I'm open to suggested revisions, but I'll, I'll just say I think a year is good because it is a long time to be a total nightmare to the neighborhood, but it really isn't my feeling that that's what's going to happen. And if anything, it gives enough time to dynamically adapt to what you learn as you begin operating. Because as much as you may have a track record at one location and may have experience, you're going to have to realize that there's idiosyncrasies to the new venue. So I don't want to put it so short that like they immediately tripped up, but I don't want to put so long that everyone's just in hell. So I'm going to go with a year, which was my original idea. I'm hoping to changing that. And, and I think the, the purpose of this condition would be report back to the commission with a, with a progress report following public notice. I'm going to just say, doesn't, we're not admitting the code here. So I'm going to say public notice to all owners and occupants within three hundred feet. Because that's a condition, not the code we're revising here. And, and at the hearing, the commission has given an opportunity to provide direction only in the context of the conditions of the project and the commitments made by the applicant, not imposing new requirements, but enforcing and implementing those commitments. Yeah.
Who's paying for that noticing?
The applicant or the, the permittee's responsibility to pay for that.
I saw the deputy director had a, that was the question. Okay.
Does that all make sense? And is that enough direction that we can have that incorporated?
So it'd be three hundred. I'd like you to, to make a motion.
Okay, I will. I just wanted to say, okay, sorry, you're right. I didn't make. Could we bring up the motion? Because I want to make sure I get it the way you have. Okay. So I'll move that the planning commission adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from SEQA, conditionally approving a use permit for the North Coast Substance Abuse Council non-medical care housing facility at three oh nine H Harris Street with an additional condition of approval added, requiring that following a year of operation, the project being brought back to the planning commission at a noticed public hearing whereby notices given to all owners and occupants within three hundred feet of the property boundaries. And the, at the hearing, the planning commission receives a report on the performance of the facility and is given an opportunity to provide direction to the applicant to improve on issues related to conditions of approval or the operational requirements and commitments meet.
Commissioner Freitas, do you want to add the level four note?
And I'll include that, that the, that the condition be applied restricting operation to a level four treatment facility. And I guess, do we have agreement that there's no changes to the fenestration? Can we, should we do something on the historical fabric part? Anyone have any?
I mean, I, I, I hear what you're saying on that piece. I'm not sure if we have enough information yet to craft something that would make a lot of sense. I mean, maybe something like if exterior alterations are proposed to be made beyond, you know, basic alterations to meet current modern health and safety code, the applicant shall coordinate with the historic professional for recommendations on modifications. But I think that's as close as we could get, something along those lines.
How about, since we know there's going to need to be some additional egress and we could get in the way of that, we'll just say that only, only change, only changes to fenestration permitted are those in the, required to comply with the building code. And, and that, that's, that's it. And all interior alterations are, are not restricted.
I think I'd be comfortable with that. Yeah.
Is that enough direction for a condition?
And did you get it all? That was, that was a lot.
Luckily, these meetings are taped, so-
Yeah.
All right. Uh, we have a motion.
I think that was beautifully crafted and I will second it.
Okay. Any additional discussion? All right.
Yeah, I guess this is the, I just say, I, I have li, I've not lived, but I work in Henderson Center and have for nearly twenty years now. I have a P.O. box. Mr. Mattioli sees me around, I see him around. Um, I don't want to act as the, flippantly, I, I, I do really realize your concerns and I don't think that this is a slam dunk. Um, and I agree with the things that were said about, this seems like a remarkable facility, frankly. Um, but it may or may not be a good fit in this location and that remains to be seen. But I do think it could be. I'm not concerned to the point where it could, it's utterly impossible. In my mind, having some familiarity, probably equal to most of the people in this room with this neighborhood, I do feel like it could be operated effectively and I hope it will be. So, um, in voting tonight, that is the reason why, um, I will be supporting it. But I do share your concerns and hope that they're not realized.
I apologize for interjecting. Commissioner Lazar, can you confirm that you did not own a property within five hundred feet of the project site? Okay.
No, I just worked there. I do own a P.O. box. Hopefully that doesn't, but I don't own it. I just rent it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Uh, please take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And I would just like to, um, say that, uh, anybody who wrote in comments or spoke has, um, at the hearing has standing to appeal to the city council. Um, there is a fee, uh, so that we can renotice and hold that hearing. Uh, and it would be the city clerk Pam Powell that you submit your, um, appeal to within ten days, ten calendar days of, of this decision. Um, that's the appeal period. Thank you, Caitlin.
And thank you so much for your participation tonight. Uh, this is a hard one and, uh, very heartfelt, obviously. Uh, this is, we don't get full rooms like this very often. Um, thank you for your engagement. All right. We will move on to new business. Uh, in what I find to be a weird, not small town situation, we are, have a new commissioner Benson and we are gonna do a resolution of service for an outgoing commissioner Benson, who I understand is not related. So, okay.
That would be me. I, should we wait until-
Let's give him a moment.
Sorry to the audience. If you guys could go outside, that would be great. We still have a few more things to take care of at the meeting.
I was, I was watching.
That was a record number of commenters since I've been here.
All right.
Sorry, I'm trying to flip to, uh, yeah, so we wanted to do a resolution of, of service, uh, for our previous commissioner Benson. Um, not only was, uh, he our, he was our vice chair on, um, the planning commission, but he was on, um, the OSPR, uh, commission, the Open Space Parks and Rec for ages and, um, was instrumental in a lot of, um, things that OSPR spearheaded. Um, and, uh, I received some feedback from Commissioner Kraft. Um, that was incorporated. Uh, but if anybody else has any thoughts on, um, improvements, um, before we, um, give the, adopt the resolution of service, just let me know.
Did you guys get a chance to read that and have anything you want to add or change?
It might be nice to, um, in the second whereas, note something about how he was elected as vice chair, but very often did serve as chair. I don't know if there's something in there to that effect. Um, but yeah, he, he ran many meetings and he always, um, had a very good, um, manner, very professional, very respectful to the public. So I would like to see that added if possible.
That's a great add.
I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but it seems like kind too. He was-
Very kind. We can add that to that second whereas.
Looks like Commissioner Lazar is still reading.
I'm trying to add something and I'm, I'm, I'm struggling to do it on the fly. Unfortunately, I didn't, I didn't do that. But, uh-
I can always read it too, if that's helpful.
I think that would be good, honestly.
Okay. Whereas on December fifteenth, twenty twenty, Craig B, Craig Benson was appointed to the City of Eureka Planning Commission after ten years of serving on the Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission. And whereas on June tenth, twenty twenty-two, Craig was elected vice chair of the planning commission, very often served as chair, well, I can't do this on the fly, but anyway, served through December twenty twenty-four. Um, whereas since his appointment to the commission, Craig has attended innumerable planning commission hearings, visited numerous project sites under consideration by the planning commission, and read through literally thousands of pages of reports and documents presented to the commission. And whereas these efforts by Craig, in combination with his integrity, thoughtfulness, empathy, good humor, and well-rounded Renaissance man knowledge and approach have contributed significantly to the planning commission's consideration of the numerous permit applications heard by the commission. And whereas Craig actively participated in the preparation, public review, and adoption of planning ordinances and policies affecting the City of, of Eureka, including text amendments, the capital improvement program, and the housing element, as well as other documents dealing with specific development issues such as parking, downtown and residential development, signage, vacation rentals, gulches and greenways, and waterfront development. And whereas with Craig's influence and contributions, the planning commission has succeeded in reconciling numerous conflicts between public interests and private rights. And now therefore be it resolved by the planning commission of the City of Eureka that Craig Benson be commended and thanked for his outstanding service to the citizens of the City of Eureka.
Did you like that Renaissance man part?
I do like that.
I liked that too. Was that yours?
I might have inserted that.
That was nice.
All right. Well, that sounds lovely to me. So do we vote on this or do we just say it's good and it goes to the council?
Uh, you vote on it.
Okay. Um, I would like to make this motion that we, uh, vote this resolution as amended.
Did Commissioner Lazar have any, anything come to you?
It didn't. And I realized the reason why is because I just, the things that I want to say are just things that I want to say personally, which is I enjoyed serving with him and that doesn't need to be the resolution, you know? And, and I found him to be a, a great asset to the commission.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'll second that then.
Uh, voice vote will be fine. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Staff reports and communication. Do you have anything for us? Um, again, welcome to the, the new attorney. I'm very pleased that you're gonna be here.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
We come up with such nerdy, technical little questions. It's, it's gonna be awesome.
Uh, deputy city attorney, would you like to just give a little background on yourself?
Sure. Uh, my name is Curtis Davis. I'm a seventh year attorney, um, coming with mostly an employment and housing background, uh, working in legal services, uh, for nonprofits and in private practice as well. Uh, and I joined about a month ago. So, uh, still learning, um, and learning the lay of the land and forming relationships, uh, with all our great staff and look forward to doing that with you as well.
And, and your years were here in Eureka?
Yes, I've lived here for just over two years. Um, so I'm a community member. I've been, um, not someone new coming in. Um, so that's given me some context about some of the issues that come to this commission. Uh, so I'm not starting from scratch.
Very good. Other reports?
Yeah, we have a couple new planners that, um, are not here tonight, but I'm sure you'll meet them in the future. Actually, we have three. Uh, Samuel Griford, assistant planner, uh, Taylor Rayburn, uh, assistant planner as well, temporary, and then Henry Baker, I believe, assistant planner. And, um, yeah, so we're happy to have them on board. So we're doing lots of training right now.
Well, that's great. We'll congratulate them when we see them, but congratulations to the leadership for getting these filled out.
Thanks. And one last thing is that, um, we're working really hard to bring the Gulch, an updated Gulch Greenway ordinance back to the planning commission. Uh, we're also working really hard on bringing the waterfront Eureka plan for adoption, um, to, uh, for, well, you'll be recommending, um, to city council. Hopefully in April, at your April meeting, uh, we'll be bringing it back. Um, we can maybe do a little report on it in March, um, before we bring it back for recommendation. Um, I can put that on the next agenda. Um, that would not be noticed, whereas the recommendation would. Um, what else? We're also working really hard on our housing element and general planning annual reports that we will be bringing soon as well. Uh, there's no new capital improvement program projects this year, so we aren't bringing the CIP, uh, this year. That's it, I think. Oh, no. We have a community meeting, um, the last Monday of February, that's the twenty-fourth, uh, at Alice Bernie Elementary School at six thirty P.M. to, um, talk about public, um, bike, pet, and transit improvements, uh, around Sunset Heights. Uh, the, uh, affordable housing development, uh, that you recently approved, uh, design review approval and a lot line adjustment for, uh, they, Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation, um, the ones that are, uh, working to develop the housing on this city-owned property, they are choosing to apply for, uh, a sustainable communities, an ASIC grant, affordable housing and sustainable communities grant. Um, and those grants come with, um, requirements to do a bunch of, um, the, uh, public improvements that are transformative to the community. Uh, Link got one and, um, now we are, uh, trying to get all of our public proof it's installed. We got, uh, us and Humboldt Transit Authority got ten million dollars from Link's grant to do a bunch of, uh, public improvements. So this meeting will be to brainstorm on what public improvements would be most transformative, uh, for this area around Sunset Heights. And then in March-
Triggered that. Yeah. On March twenty-sixth, um, here actually in the council chambers, we'll be holding a community meeting with the Wiat tribe on their housing projects as well. Um-
Can you say where the, those are located?
Yeah. Oh, Fifth and D and then the city hall parking lot, the Sixth and L sites. So that's exciting coming up as well.
Big stuff? All right. I'll close. Anything under, under other reports and communications? Definitely welcome. Michael Benson?
Thank you.
All right. This is when I wield the gavel. We are adjourned.